Like to call our meeting to order. Thank you everyone for coming and open our meeting with prayers.
Let's pray. Father God, we're just thankful to stay here. We thank you for the opportunity to come and serve the citizens of our county. We ask you now, Lord, just to bless everyone who's come tonight, touch us and draw us closer to you. Use us, dear Lord, to tell people about your love and your grace and mercy. Use us, dear Lord, to improve the living conditions, the quality of life and everything that our citizens need. Christ, and then we pray these things.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Freedom of information announcement in accordance with South Carolina Code of laws nineteen seventy six is amended. Marion Star Motors Enterprise has been notified of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting. Item four, approval of minutes for January ninth.
So the motion second.
You got a motion, you got a second, any discussion? All in favor of motion, say five, say nine.
Aye.
opposed likewise, the ayes have it. Item five, Ms. Davis's.
He's going back at that right now.
All right. Item six, ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Item A, we're still on hold. We don't have any word from that project, so we're just still waiting on that one. That would take us to item B. You have a full copy of this ordinance in front of you. It's the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero one. And ordinance authorizing an amendment to Marion County Personnel Policy twenty eighteen dash one two. And any amendments there too, so that the policy can be further amended by resolution of council rather than by ordinance. So all this really does is just change typically when you have an ordinance and you adopt it in the ordinance fashion, you have to adopt another full ordinance. Three readings, sometimes a public hearing if you had one when it was adopted to any make any small little adjustment to it. From a personnel policy, sometimes things need to happen a little bit faster. So I think it would be wise for us to go ahead and just make it so that you can amend that personnel policy simply by a resolution. So it only takes one budget. And you don't have to continue it out over a month and a half period of time. So that's all this is for.
You heard her, heard the recommendations from the attorney who was here. So, second, motion second, any discussion? All in favor of motion, say five, say nine?
Aye.
Opposed likewise, the ayes have it.
Item C, this is first reading, so just remind you and those in attendance, no action needs to be taken, just simply reading the title is sufficient. First reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero two, an ordinance amending the business license ordinance of the county of Marion to update the class schedule as required by Act one seventy six of twenty twenty. That's all I have.
All right. Item seven, committee report. Committee number one has nothing before it, doesn't Miss Davis?
No, sir.
Committee number two.
Has nothing, it's true.
All right, legal update.
I don't have anything in this section, but I do have the necessity of two brief items in executive section that are covered by Attorney Flatt privilege.
Item nine, Mr. Neil Fairbanks, Dr. Paul DeMarco, Marion County Library.
Thank you, Your Honor, for allowing us here to pass this. What I'd like to do tonight, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for allowing the library to be here tonight. Have an opportunity to be before you. And what we would like to do tonight is two-fold is make you aware an ongoing situation with the library regarding its financial situation. And second, to allow you to ask any questions or concerns or clear any misconceptions with the county library and its operation within the county. Not going to give you a history lesson of the library, but libraries was established in eighteen ninety eight Marion County by Judge Wood. Some of you may have heard of that name with H. C. Graham also, you've heard of the H. C. Graham estate. So it's that's the same individual. That was very fundamental in the funding of the library. The library that exists in the county within the city limits of county was is a Carnegie Library, one of about eighteen hundred built in the United States. It was built in nineteen oh five. We have a branch in Mullins. They have a branch in Nichols. We also have a bookmobile. We have a satellite location operates part-time in Sellers. And we have through the bookmobile, we have outreach that works in other areas of the county and serves the nursing homes and some of the daycares within the county. Nineteen seventy five, there was a renovation. Prior to that, in nineteen twenty nine, the library in Marion, it burned down. It was rebuilt in nineteen thirty, and then subsequently in nineteen seventy five, there was a renovation. In the mid to late eighties, there was, um, okay, thank you. In the mid to late eighties, it was determined that the library in the quest to fulfill its mission was going to need a renovation. So even though it was renovated recently at that time in nineteen seventy five, it was the powers that be said, you know, we need to really go ahead and plan and build. Since nineteen seventy five, that hasn't happened. There's been five efforts to renovate the Marion Library. And hopefully, and we can discuss that in a few minutes. That will come to fruition unfortunately fifty years later. So we have a three and a half million dollar renovation that we hope to to complete and break ground on this year. Concerning our financial situation and the folder that you got. The library has been, quite frankly, has been seriously underfunded for the last twenty some years. The Marion County Library is the only county that we're aware of that is funded as a line item appropriation in the budget. All the, all the libraries as the Marion County one previously was prior to two thousand two, it was funded through a millage system. Whatever reason, it was changed. Uh, that was quite some time ago, previous administrations. And through from fiscal two twenty fiscal two thousand two, two thousand three, when it was changed through two thousand six, appropriations got up to six hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. Okay? So for those of you that own businesses or operate within budgets, or you have your retirement plan, if you had the same amount of money in two thousand six and in twenty twenty four, it wouldn't be looking pretty good. Well, that's where we're at with the library. The library essential essentially operates on the same budget dollar-wise as it did in two thousand six, with the exception of one twelve thousand dollar increase in fiscal twenty sixteen that brought our total funding from the county up to six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Since then, and there's been some reasons, there's been COVID, the county hasn't had the money. But since then, we haven't had any increases in funding. As a result, most libraries, the goal to operate is fifty percent salaries, fifty percent operational budgets and to buy books and so forth like that. Currently, our ratio is in excess of seventy percent. Doesn't, and no, healthcare goes up, retirement plans go up and so forth like that. So it's just not sustainable for us as a library, as a county entity, to remain an appropriation from two thousand six. And part of the reason that we feel like is a ward is because we were changed from an approach, we were changed from a village-based appropriation to just a lineup. That being said, we can remain a line item if if you want to. If that's the most expedient thing accounting-wise and it's easiest for the county, that's fine. What we really need is an increase in appropriations to fulfill the mission of the library. That's six hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. With inflation and so forth like that would be the equivalent of nine hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars now. So we're, um, three hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars less than we were. And it makes it very, very difficult to operate the library. Um, in the past couple of months, there's been some discussion about the library not being able to fulfill its mission, not being able to provide customer service and not being, quite frankly, not having the hours open in certain locations. It simply comes down to having staff. We can't really afford any more staffing that we are. That being said, I think that the library has been more than patient. We're a team player. Back during COVID, we cut back. But we've had to use some of our shortfall money. And at this time, what we kindly ask, even though it's only January and you feel like you just got through the budget. But in the upcoming budget, if we could sit down and work together as a team to have some more appropriation to the library, we really appreciate that. And, um, that's where we're at. At this time, I have brought other people with me. I have vice chairman, Dr. Paul DeMarco, and I have our finance director Cindy Hayes, and I have our new director, Patty Burns. Going back to previously, you know, one of the reasons that we have made it money-wise is that we haven't had the quality leadership, which is I. E. Directors. We've been able to save money simply by not having director, which is not a good thing. It took us our search, our search this past time until we hired Ms. Burns was one full day short of a year. Um, we entered various candidates. They came, they visited, and was a situation such that not so much what we had at the library, but we were actually turned down by very, very good candidates. Or mostly because we couldn't offer a competitive salary was what was offered throughout the state and throughout the southeast. And quite frankly, we're very, very good here in Marion County about not seeing ourselves as people from the outside see us. So some of our candidates turned our job down, not because of what we had in Marion County, but because what we didn't. And one in budget continually came up in every interviews that I had. They'd ask, what was your budget? And I tell them, I said, how do you even run the library? You know, is it a part-time library? And I said, no, it's not, you know. So, um, I realize I've just spewed a bunch of grievances to you. I don't hold any of you accountable for that. This is because until tonight, probably all of you are unaware of this situation, and that's why we're here tonight. I would like to, Ms. Burns, to kind of tell you a little bit. I've told you where we're at, where we've been, but I want to tell you where we presently are and where we want to go. Is Patty?
Thank you for having me. Uh, with my staff of eleven people, three of which are part-time. Uh, we have, over the year of two, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, had eight thousand and two hundred library computer sessions with people coming in to utilize the, uh, the internet and to, uh, print. That's a lot of with eleven people and fourteen computers. Eleven people. Eighty-two hundred. That was to use the, that used the computer. Uh, what do you mean, same thing? Oh, oh, we have, yeah, we have a good following. I don't know how many of those are, um, but that's a lot of, uh, can you help me print? Can you, you know, for the staff? Yes, sir. A year. Yes, sir. And and that's a lot, but that's not all we do. We're not just books. We're not just computers. Uh, we have notary services. Uh, if you go to the bank, they're going to want fifteen dollars to notarize a document. And we do it for free. Um, we have two notaries on staff so that, um, at pretty much any time you can have something notarized. We have facts. There's no, there's no UPS store. There's no Kinko's here in the area, and we get a lot of the smaller businesses around town, um, the towns coming in and printing their flyers or their menus for the restaurant. So we have a lot, we, we aren't just serving individuals, we're serving businesses as well. Uh, now, on top of all of that, we've averaged a month twenty-two hundred books a month. And that, uh, that has increased over the last two months. When I arrived in August, I realized that one of the things that we did not have was a strong collection. And one of the things that I am very good at is collection development, which is spending money. But, um, you have to have the materials for the folks to come in. And, yes, sir.
Excuse me. If I can't ask a question while I'm thinking about it, I'll forget.
I understand.
Twenty-two hundred.
That's how many items that we circulate a month.
What do you mean items?
Um, books, uh, books, um, audiobooks, um, physical items. And we also have, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
So they obviously have to do some kind of library requirement.
Yes, sir.
Turns out. So then you should be able to break this down by demo brand, where it is located, from Martin County, they're from.
Gresham? I have a lot of folks from Gresham. I go home through Gresham. Love, I, I love it out there. Um, I live in Norrie County and I do go that way. And I would ride by all summer and I would see where the old school was. And I'm thinking, I can, but I not at this moment. But that's one of the places that we are looking at going. But again, eleven people. So if three of them are part-time. So we, we have the satellite branch in Sellers, and I have people there every week. But you know, that's taking some two people away from Marion or Mullins or Nichols to go and to sit and serve folks out there. So we, we, but we do, we want to build. We want, I have a staff that is ready to go. I have very enthusiastic, I could not, I can't brag on them enough. And they want the right things. And but we have to have some support and not just money. You need to be library users. You need to be able to say, yeah, we have a nice library. Yeah, I've been in there. And, uh, because it's important that they hear it from you. They look up to you, your leadership. And I think that, uh, we could all work together and make it better and to support the people in the county.
Library did funding, it's a first of course.
That is comes from our appropriations.
So there's no support from the state side.
We do have, uh, we do receive state monies and but, uh, it's right now, not a very large percent. The state library sets guide has has a guideline and they want fifty to twenty percent of your budget to go to the materials, books, CDs, that sort of thing. And we have not even been anywhere close to fifteen percent. We
Overall budget or the money that they keep?
The overall budget.
So push.
Yes, sir.
Thinking about future plan, transition that's already taking place in society, regards to using technology and talent, all these other devices. Whether or not it's better to start investing in audiobooks and digital books that's better by physical tests.
We do that as well.
Because the general problem that I have, that I represent a district that's Gresham, Ripley's neck, Centenary, Rain, Centenary, it's massive.
Yes, sir.
Even going back to my youth, the library in Marion was a foreign entity to us. And quite frankly, that comes down to a fundamental issue of fairness and what students have access to and what they do not. So when I'm hearing that, talking about expanding physical library Marion, still see how that in any way, shape or form benefits the kids that, um, live on three seventy eights.
Right.
Same kids who have to about to wake up at five o'clock in the morning.
To get to school. Yeah.
Moment. Uh, it's, it's not fair.
I, I we, I, I, I have big plans and one of the things that I do is expanding is a new bookmobile. And does that replace an entire great big nice library? No, but it does at least provide access. We, we have two services that we offer, um, with audiobooks and ebooks that you can access with your library card that is totally free.
You, you're in a funny position. But when I think about saying, okay, there needs to be a three million dollar renovation to this physical building in Marion, I wonder whether or not it's smaller satellite offices of buildings, building.
With
with that money. Or does that three million dollars go exclusively to the physical building in Marion?
That goes to the physical building in Marion. But from that physical building in Marion is where we build the satellites, where we have additional, we create a better and, uh, a better collection that we can rotate out of, uh, the main library into the smaller hu, the smaller hubs, the bookmobile. Um, we have a lot of ideas that we'd like to to do and to work on. And again, they all have to do with money. I have a wonderful staff that works very hard and are very enthusiastic and really want to do what's best for Marion County. And they can only do so much a week. And people and money is, is is what we're lacking. And, um, of course, everybody, no one, if you gave everybody millions of dollars, they'd still want more. And but I want, I grew up in a community that was twenty-six, twenty-seven miles from town. I know what it's like to not to sit and wait on the bookmobile to come. Um, so it's, I understand. I understand that and I want to help fix it.
One more question. Where are we at with the audit?
With the audit report, we have, uh, we are working with our auditor. And he is, has portions of our audit for the previous year, and that should be done rather soon.
The floor. The chairman and the board wanted to respond, but maybe answer a couple of questions or add to.
Yeah, concerning for the nation department, um, and and I apologize for not exactly knowing that. Part of renovations, you know, when you're discussing the main branch of the library, that is the main branch to headquarters. Fifty percent of that is operation. Um, Mr. Boxworth can attest to the fact that over in Marion, the personnel is downstairs in the basement. And if there's a heavy dew, it floods. If there's a storm of six to eight inches of water, now we have mold. So we have had to close the basement off, which is where the staff works. And planning of the director's office was upstairs, he closed off one significantly large portion of the library of saves and put the offices upstairs. That's in parts, part of what the expansion is because we had to get out of the basement through Hurricane Lawrence and, um, Matthew, there was eight inches of water. We lost, uh, we lost computers, we lost, um, some material, and now we have a mold problem that's not, uh, not sustainable and we're jumping, we have to have any health issues for that. But that in part is why the renovation is on, though.
Well, if, if it's three million dollars, why not just build a new?
So you can't do it. Three million dollars.
Yeah.
We're, we're barely, so you can barely, although it is now, just to get a fourth house, there's good condition, there's not been twenty, thirty million dollars for a library.
Repeat that, how much you say?
A new library of, of many, it's significant size, probably twenty million dollars.
Aye.
So if that's the case, and just going south, if a library of any significant size would be about twenty, imagine what the cost of a new countywide high school would be. Um, I understand the need to renovate this place. But even after full renovation, my concern are all of these young people south of seventy-six and five over one, all the way down to three seventy. Who, like me, all of my life, almost never had a significant experience with the library and that was fun for your parents paying taxes, getting it to the general funds, never had ability to prosper or, or get the services, summer activities.
Right. Absolutely.
And that's fundamentally.
Well, I mean, we have, we they're doing satellite branch there. We would actually like to have money to have the bookmobile that could go down there on more renovations, our bookmobiles and models. You know, a new bookmobile is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and there's a nine-month wait if we order it tomorrow. I mean, we want to do these things, but we can't even do what we want to do in Mullins or what we want to do in Memphis or what we want to do itself. Quite frankly, we can't do what we want to do in Marion. I mean, we want to do these things.
Absolutely.
As far as, you know, you're talking about the youth, see, that's one thing, you know, going back to the capital sales tax. Just a little interesting, the very first capital sales tax, this is the way before you retired. The genesis of that idea came from the library board because they want, they were searching for a way that was equitable to pay for a new library. So in two thousand eight, when it passed, there was twenty projects selected. Ironically, the library was not one of them. So we were grand ballin' in from the second capital sales tax that we got, we got one point five million dollars. And there's other projects that have gone on the county that we've spent way more. And we've got ball fields and we've got this, and I'm, I'm sports nerd, okay? And I think what, I don't can't, I can't say what it was on Marion, but I know Mr. Floyd, I'm a grand, I'm like, I love sports, but not every kid plays sports. You know, so we may have some ball fields and some basketball all over here. So what about the kids that want to play chess? What about the kids that want to, you know, check out the latest book? And, um, and then the follow-up also, when you're talking about that fifteen to twenty percent on material, actually, um, that does include audio books. And one of the things that the bookmobile does, we have spent money in fact state ran that has a, a Wi-Fi system on it where we can drive that vehicle anywhere in the county. And if, and if an individual has a telephone or a laptop or a tablet, they can download that book within fifteen seconds. We have that technology.
We even have, we even have the tablet they could check out. You know, we have tablets that circulate if they want to to read an ebook.
Mr. Danny.
Uh, I, I hear y'all passion for library. I appreciate that. Um, you say you need some help financially.
Yes, sir.
When you get the help, if you get the help, how long, I, I see you have a vision for the library.
Absolutely.
How long would that vision take? I mean, how long would it take to get the library like you want?
Oh, I, I won't live long enough.
Cosmo Rogers have, um, how long will it take to, to try to?
Well, to, we need to get Marion up and running, and I don't mean open and running, but have our construction underway. Um, I have all sorts of projects and things in mind to spread us out across the county while the renovation is going on. And then taking that and building from what we, we do while we are closed for renovation, because we will have to close for at least a short period of time.
Ms. Watford, have you met with the library board or the directors?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, we have met. Um, we have been in communications. I've heard their concerns. Um, I thought it was important that they come to council and share their concerns so that we can begin, um, and strengthen the partnership. Um, I believe, um, that it is needed and I, I would like to discuss with council how we can, you know, uh, bridge that gap that's there.
Floyd, I'd like to just say a couple of things. And I can, you can, like someone mentioned, we can see the passion. And unless you're there and you see what it really benefits, listen, I hate to say it, I never was one into the library.
And I was never in the sport. And I was never in the sports, I was in the library.
I was out there playing basketball, so guess what, but thank the Lord, it worked out.
Yes.
And if there's anything that we can, at least I feel, that we can touch people who don't have the opportunity.
Absolutely.
Because I know we got to have it Marion in a central location, but there's a lot of kids out there like.
Absolutely.
And recreation and bottom glory and.
Oh, I was coming to talk about you, talk to you about that anyway.
And this will do anything possible.
Yes, sir.
But the the passion y'all got, and now that you brought it to us, we kind of see what the deal really is because you hear all kinds of stuff.
Absolutely.
No matter what you do, they're not gonna support it, so it doesn't matter. What I want us to do is. Let us understand if y'all have a list of things that we have got to do, if it's a bookmobile. I don't know what it is, but if we had a list of things that were necessary to at least stay in fair shape. It would help me when y'all get to come and ask for more money.
Okay.
At least I would know where the money's going and when people start asking me, well, listen, this is what they had to have. These people are in it every day.
Right.
That would benefit me.
I want to see more young people in the library and I want to see more young people having access to library, um. I look out and I look out of my office or I'm up at the circulation desk and. I I I want a rambunctious kid to run through so I could tell him to slow down, you know, it's, I want them in there. It's important they're in there, um, they need to be in there so that they're safe. So they can have something to read and can find something to do that maybe is productive and not. Not do things that may not should be doing.
And Mr. Chairman, one more comment, I'm through. I appreciate all the hard work because I know Neil well. Let me tell you, it's hard to find somebody who'll work harder than he is.
Yeah, you're right. Yes.
Everything y'all do is volunteering and the staff also, but it takes a lot of good people.
Yes, sir, and I've got, I've got a staff of wonderful people who want to do wonderful things. And it's, we need some help. And, you know, we're not too proud to ask for it, so, yeah, if if we don't tell you, you don't know. So we were trying to reach out and let you all, but I, we can come up with a plan with some ideas of things I want to do. And see if we can't come up with something that all of us feel passionate about and can fund.
Is the library prohibited in any way on the state law from doing fundraising or applying for grants?
I have three grants of them, right, at work right now. Yes, sir, I've got two with family doll, um, with Dollar General. Um, they are usually very generous. One is a family literacy uh grant, which is. Uh, up to ten thousand dollars, uh, what we plan, our idea for that is. People need to know, their children need books, need to know from the first day and we want to put together. Uh, like a, something, a handout or a a bag when mothers deliver in the hospital. To give them a book, give them a library card, give them something cute with the library on it so that they can. They can see that, A, we want them in there and they see our logo and they, you know. Every time they look at that, they think of the library and that's. And we want them in there, we want them in there for story time.
Are you familiar with Candid?
Candid.
So there used to be an organization called the Foundation Center.
Yes, 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 sir, yes, I have.
Emerge with Guide Star.
Right.
And I'm very familiar with their uh uh their model, they used to go to the headquarters often in New York City.
Yeah, I've been, I've been to the um Foundation Center training, um, I actually coordinated the Foundation Center. Um, in Georgetown, which is where I was previously, um, that that is a very good resource. Um, the, the new, the new version is very expensive, the old version was very expensive, but um. I do have connections and can go to Georgetown and can use their candid uh to research and I will. Uh, but those I have found are usually very competitive and for some. For some odd reason, there's not a lot that is specifically South Carolina. But, yeah, Grant, right, I I have spent seventeen years with a gentleman, I call the Grant Guru. And he had, if it was not for this grant, Georgetown would be just, you know, we'd be in the same boat we're in.
You may want to focus in on some of the public trusts that have been established in the candid system. Um, some of them go back to the eighteen hundreds where the money has just been turning over compound interest. Literally have millions of dollars available uh for targeted uh requests.
And I, I mean, I'm open to any ideas, any suggestions, recommendation, um, if you want to sit and talk about it, we can. I'd be happy to hear what you, you know, you, what you know and what I know, we put it together, so tell them what we could do. So, uh, I think you're through with me.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um. I would like to get with the library again, um, get with their financial team, with Ms. Patty, with the board and perhaps bring them back. Um, once we've had some discussion, um, and have another, um, meeting.
Yeah.
This, we can kind of dig into and and see how we can analyze and come up with some solutions, if that would be okay.
That's, that's okay, but if we could focus on this thing, put it on top burner.
Yes.
Because this isn't the first time this group's been here, first time since you you've been here, but they've been here in the past. And we've just kind of not responded.
Yes, sir, and I have some ideas as well, so again, I I want to get with them and then we can come back.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Your chair.
I do have one comment, um, I'd like to thank you for increasing the hours at the Nichols office. Um, those young people over there and even the senior citizens, they use that library a lot. I thank you for identifying that and giving them some increased hours, which is one of my pet peeves about this whole system.
Thank you, and one of the things that I do want to do uh is to get some weekend hours in Mullins. And darn, it goes right back to the same thing, need more money, need more people. So, uh, I have some things for the summer planned that will be on the weekends in all of the branches. So, uh, not every kid can make it during the week, but maybe, you know, during the weekend, there's a. A better chance of them getting transportation or their availability, so we have a lot we're doing.
You probably don't know, but what year was the Mullins Library redid?
Twenty fourteen. Twenty sixteen, sixteen or fourteen? Sixteen, okay.
Explained earlier, the city of, the city of Mullins actually owns that physical location. And the city of Mullins, quite to their credit, elected to use their capital sales tax to renovate.
Good deal, it's it's nice, it's nice. Yeah, Nichols, Nichols did the same thing.
Mr. Rogers, if you don't help us sign the bill down there, we're on the same gene, we'll put your name and your picture on it.
There's actually, um, an a a school available that was closed. Um, Britsneck High School, but it's then became Britsneck Elementary School. That facility is wide open, it has a gym that could be used, the students haven't been able, young people, the community hasn't been able to use that. That they paid for, um, with a bond that's been sitting there for years, so we could, the library is already there. The wifi system, the security system is already there, electricity is still into the building. We could actually do something really interesting, do a library, do a community center, have more space for other opportunities. Uh, unfortunately, Zach isn't with us, but Zach was screening me with some great ideas. Things that could be used down there in that facility, so we have a facility.
They've.
It's the old Britsneck High.
Yeah, the elementary, yeah, that's, that's, uh, we've already, we've already talked to them, we're talking to them, we're still working with them. Um, again, I have to find the money and I have to find a person to, you know, so. We're always, but that, every, ev- every day going past that school, that's what I was thinking. You done with me?
How often do you board, meet a library board, often do you meet?
They, we, um, monthly except for, uh, December and June, July. The third, the third Thursday, I can, I will be happy to email it.
If you could email it to me, Ms. Patty.
Yes, sir, I will, I sure will.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir, thank you for having me.
Neil Paul, thank y'all, appreciate what you do, look forward to hearing from you. All right, I'm Ken, Mr. Jimmy Floyd.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Floyd is not present.
Probably in jail.
Administration update, administrative update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of council and those in attendance. Um, under our capital sales, I just want to give a brief update, um, about our animal shelter, we have. Um, the metal building up, I don't know if you all have rode past there, have seen it, um, the metal building is up. In the same location that we tore the other building down, um, we are now, um, waiting to have the bathroom put in. And the second tank, um, so that should be the next couple of weeks, um, probably the month of February. So that's for the animal shelter. As far as miscellaneous, um, I want to remind, um, District Two that we do need. Um, a seat for the Economic Development Chair, um, Council, excuse me. Um, also, we're asking, um, for council's approval for Wakestone. To provide rocks for the county roads, he was the winner of the rock bid, um, so if you can approve that. Uh, we can move forward with that bid, he was the winner of the bid, which, um, we'll be, we'll be providing rocks for our dirt roads.
You heard the recommendation.
I made the motion, you, thank you, I'll second.
Motion second, any discussion? All favor the motion seated in the five and say, now. Put likewise, yeah, as have.
Thank you. Also, we will be rebidding, um, the asphalt milling, um, bid, we only had one bidder. Um, and really by our procurement, uh, requirements, we'd need at least three, so we are rebidding that, um, which will be. Will be opening that on February second and that's for asphalt milling. Um, thirdly, on bids, I have completed the, um, Willoughby Property Farming Bid. Um, and that will be opening on February twelfth, I've contacted, um, I've put it on our county website. As well as SKEBO. Um, W twos will be given to employees, um, on Tuesday, January thirtieth. And we will begin our budget workshops and discussion with council. Uh, for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year in February, time and date to be determined. That's all I have for administrative reports.
Do, do we have some kind of meeting on the twenty-ninth?
We do, um, we have our council connection, um, for the city. Um, City of Marion, City of Mullins, Sellers and Nichols, as well as the county will have a council discussion. School board also, yes, sir.
Have they been notified?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Floyd.
On the, uh, bids or the requested bid.
Yes, sir.
How long farmers gonna be able to be live the property for one year?
It just, it will be determined upon if we have an industry that's gonna come in.
And that's, that's what my question is, so we got, I don't know if it's caused, uh, the word fall or.
We do, yes, sir, um, what I wrote in the bid was, once we, once an industry has identified that they want that property. We will work with the farmers on an exit plan. Yes, sir.
Um. This past week, we had a CTC meeting. Um, the Transportation Commission meeting, did we get any money from them to do? Any of the dirt roads as far as the, the crush milling, is that kind of thing?
We did, we got, um, because I just did the, um, reimbursement, we got twenty thousand. Um, for our rocks and I believe we got thirty for the asphalt milling and we're again working with. Our our CTC individual who is representing Marion County, getting that money, putting that money back into our roads.
Okay, thank you.
And one other comment about that, I had someone tell me the other day that Mr. Bobby Hay has been doing a good job.
Yes, sir, and that's who I was just referring to.
And I wanted to bring that up because we don't usually hear people doing a good job.
That's true, and he was the individual that, again, got us that twenty thousand and thirty thousand, he has everything to do with that, so.
I heard the same thing, Mr. Floyd.
Yeah, so we're, we're appreciative, that's all the administrative reports I have.
Our requests and comments and council members.
Are there any regulations or restrictions on solar farms in the county that y'all know of?
Any restrictions?
Yes, sir.
They have to be approved by our planning commission.
Okay.
Right, it goes through the same exact zoning requirements as any, any business, but there's not any separate, uh, restrictions just.
Okay, planning, okay, got one more thing.
Uncle Min, one of our councilmen, he run up on a wreck the other day and pulled a gentleman out of a burning truck. Just to captain off the floor, I'd like to thank you, give him a hand. We don't give enough thanks for the EMS and fires and he run up on it and the man fired on truck and he pulled him out, I appreciate that.
That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else got anything?
Yes, um, I have a question, um. Estimates on Foxhole would drop from eight million to fifty?
Last meeting?
Yes.
It was to, it was from, uh, two something is where it started in the initial phase. To one seventy-one, I believe, is what the total ended up being in that final read, or one sixty-eight, see the one seventy-one or one sixty-eight. Well, that was the agreement, so that was their reading of of the ordinance and that's what set the final number.
And the project got smaller or what changed?
The, the way that these projects work, that's why, um, on the very front end, when these things first started. Um, they weren't even considered in the fee and loo process because the process they have to go through with the power companies is they have to. Get put on the shortlist and then once they get put on the shortlist, then they actually get the deal. But the power company tells them, this is the megavolt watts we need, this is what we have to have from you. So they don't really know on the very front end, when we're at the inducement resolution stage. And generally, at least first reading, sometimes even second reading, they're still waiting to get their information from the power company as to what supply they're gonna need to fit. So it can vary, but again, like in that particular one that that, um. That we're talking about now, the property that we're collecting right now on is like two thousand dollars a year. And now we're going to a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, so it's, it's kind of a, so no matter what those numbers, yeah, it's, it's a pretty big deal. Pretty change in in tax income to have that process in place.
That's the kind of change we need.
Come on. Ms. Watford, when are we gonna get our airport committee?
I can work on that, um, Mr. Turner, um, I know it's been a committee that has not been replaced prior to me. Um, so that is something that I can put on my list to get started and make sure that we have a running committee.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, do we have a need for an executive session for contractual, is that what?
I have two items that are covered by attorney-client presence, yes, sir.
What is that, is that contractual or?
Uh, they're both of economic development nature, but it's more of a legal matter than than economic development.
Okay.
I'm good, I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good.
All right, sometimes we're gonna have to do something, we have hired an administrator.
That's correct.
All right, so we need to get together and it's up to this council how we're gonna do it. Usually it would be done by committee number one, come back and make a recommendation to full council. If that's agreeable with everybody or we have a meeting where full council can come. When going to executive session to talk about.
I think we should handle this in the executive session, um, the great concern that I already raised, um, last year about the committees is that each committee has four members. According to state law, when four members meet, that's a public meeting. Uh, and so I think we need to handle, it's a contractual matter, we need to handle it in executive session while everyone is there.
What's speaking, Ken, was that all right with everybody? Okay. All right, we'll call, we say this, we call a special meeting. Uh, for contractual matter.
Yes, sir, just give me the date, one.
Anybody got any dates around?
A Wednesday night would be good for me. Wednesday night would be good for me too.
I'll soldier final meeting.
Sir.
There's need to be next, please follow up. Twenty eight? All right, well, listen, can everybody do a meeting on thirty first at six o'clock?
That's okay.
You don't need a motion.
Motion second discussion, all favorite emotion to have a special meeting on the thirty first at six o'clock. To discuss the contractual matter. All those in favor, signify, say now? Opposed likewise, the eyes have it. The eyes have it. All right, now we need to go into executive session for economic development.
Can we add personnel in case? Cause we cannot discuss any personnel now unless it has to do that.
No, you can add it.
Just in case.
Economic development and personnel.
Yes, sir.
So, second, motion second, discussion, all of that. All right, we're now going into executive session. Thank you. We went into executive session for personnel and economic development matter. No action was taken, we need to come out of executive session back. Motion in discussion, all favorite motion, signify, say now? Opposed likewise, the eyes have it. We're now back in, back in open session, no action was taken in executive session, what I hear from council.